Good evening and welcome to the Policy Subcommittee Meeting of the Brockton School Committee. Today is Tuesday, April 26th, and the time being 5:38 PM. I'd like to establish a quorum. Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Homer.
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan, and the chair is here. Thank you. So we do have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is Discussion and Potential Vote on BPS Special Education Policies and Procedures Manual. I believe we have Laurie Mason presenting this evening. And Sharon Wolder. Ms. Mason is going to go first. Thank you.
Good evening. Okay, did I press them? Okay, I'm good. Thank you. Laurie Mason, the Director of Special Ed. Nice to meet you, Jared. So we are required to have a Policies and Procedures Manual for Special Education. And this policy and procedures manual really walks through parents and school staff about the process for special education. So we talk about the first part of it. We give the parents rights, and we have that in multiple languages. And then we're going to walk through the important aspects of special education. When a parent refers a child, when a school refers a child, timelines, what the process is for the Special Education Department, the information we gather from the schools. And we really walk through mandated state and federal guidelines, and then also looking at what the process is for the IEP. We have a lot of information in here, and, you know, I'm sure you can read it at your leisure, but this is really just highlighting what needs to be in place for staff and for families. The second packet that I gave you is really what I share with teachers on what is special Sorry, I need to put my glasses on. What is special education? How is it determined? It's almost like a special education in a nutshell. So it's this document is really all about the big procedures manual. You know, age limits, evaluation process, timelines, options for parents. And then at the end, a few years back, and probably like five years ago, I created a parent IEP checklist for parents. So at every team meeting, parents receive this checklist. And it's really, it's kind of flows through the IEP process. So parents will go through, this is the IEP, and, you know, they circle yes or no. They typically will sit next to somebody in the school that they're very familiar with, the special ed teacher, or the classroom teacher, or school adjustment counselor. They just answer the questions to make sure that the process is followed. And it's something for the parents to take with them. And it's really been helpful to help with the understanding of the IEP process. Because it is overwhelming for parents to come to a meeting with, you know, could be 10 people at a table talking about their child. You know, it's really to help with the process.
Okay. So, sorry.
No, please.
So how long does the process normally take? Are we going to go over that shortly?
So when we, a parent requests a team meeting, or a school requests a team meeting, from the time they sign their evaluation consent, it's 30 to 45 days for the child to be evaluated, the team to meet, write the IEP, and present it to the parent. So it's a 30 to 45 day window. So typically, we're running our team meetings on the 35th or 36th day of that process because we want to make sure that we give the full 30 days to evaluate the child. And we like to use that full 30 days to make sure that the evaluation is comprehensive. And sometimes it takes multiple days and times to evaluate a student. And we don't want a child to sit with one special ed evaluator for four or five hours during a day, so we'll spread it over a period of time. When the parents are at the team meeting, before the team meeting, they get their evaluations two days in advance. They're able to review them on their own, and then they come with questions. And the process for determining whether a child has a disability is that the team presents the information. We follow the Massachusetts Flow Chat, which is in the Procedures Manual of, does your child have a disability? Do they require specialized instruction? How is that impacting their education? So the two things that we really, I mean, testing is, you know, pretty concrete data, but really looking at and getting information from the parent and the classroom teacher. Classroom teachers are with the children, students, every day. Parents are with their kids every day. So getting a lot of that information to help drive where are we going? Where are we going with this, with the IEP? If there is an IEP. And then we provide the parent at the meeting a summary of, is your child have a disability? Are they going to receive services? In what areas? And what does that look like? And then typically, we take up to 10 days to get the IEP to the parent.
I just have, I have another quick question.
Sure.
I don't mean to keep interrupting.
No.
If any of the members have any questions up until now, I can call upon you. So what is the percentage of the amount of parents that actually go through the process? As far as our students, what is the percentage? Are we seeing that those that are going through this process to see if their child needs an IEP, is it the majority? They do need an IEP? Or are we offering something if they don't qualify for this? There is a backup as far as providing them with help, extra help that they might need?
So I don't actually have the percentage, however. The schools have what we call an IST process, which is instructional support teams. So any child that is struggling, a teacher can bring them forth to this team, and they're going to look at what is the area the child is struggling is? What can we do for interventions? And they're going to provide interventions and take data. And so typically, if the student is not responding to that intervention, then we move that child through the IEP process. We're finding that students that go through the IST process and really have strong interventions that are done with consistency and, you know, or validity, that we're qualifying students because they're not responding to the intervention. If a parent requests an evaluation, we still, we generate the consent, but we still bring the child to IST just to see if there's anything else in the interim we can do for the child and provide some interventions and share that information. I think children are struggling. We've been, since March of 2020, kids have been not in school consistently. Children are struggling, and the schools are really looking at what interventions can we put in place before we get to special education. Schools offer varying intervention programs through either Title I, or we have assistants in the building that are pulling small groups. Our gen ed teachers are also doing interventions within the classroom. In some of the schools, we utilize their special ed teacher to do groups with students in the classroom that present as at-risk to get a gauge on providing the intervention to see, oh, do we need to move this child through the IEP process or the team meeting process?
Okay. No, definitely. We do hear from a lot of parents, and it's definitely a process. I'm asking some of the questions. I might already know the answers, but a lot of the people that are watching don't know. So I like to sometimes ask a question. That way you can explain it thoroughly. Mr. Rodriguez, did you have a question? Okay. Mrs. Sullivan?
Or the school. So if the school is, or a school is finding that a teacher, or a school adjustment counselor, or even principals will refer our students for evaluations because if they're struggling. But the parent also, yes. The parent also requests.
So this information here, would the parents get this?
The policy and procedure, that will be on our website.
Okay.
And then through the CPAC, this will go to Terry for the CPAC.
Okay, so this one here would go to parents?
I call it special education in a nutshell.
Right, okay. Because we know that they would never read all this.
Some may. And we will have, we will have it translated, just for the purpose, I didn't, you know, for tonight.
So they would get this packet here? Okay.
Yes. And they all receive the parent IEP checklist? Because we do, I do, you know, I send them to the teachers, and they send them out to the, to the parents via email. That was one of the things through the pandemic, that our communication with our families is stronger because we have everyone, you know, utilize email and teams. So it was easier to get information to our families.
Right. But previous to us having this, what did we give parents? Because I know there was information out there. Because, I mean, my children went through the process, and I'm familiar with the process. And right now, we have a little, you know, packet, but before, I know there was information that.
There was information shared. So if the school, if the schools share a lot of information with parents. So if a parent, you know, calls the school and says, my child is struggling, or if a teacher is noticing a child is struggling, they're going to reach out to the family first.
Yeah.
Listen, I'm concerned. We have a process. We want to bring it to our team to talk about doing some interventions. And so there's that first part of communication. You know, we don't want parents to hear from special ed first. Because we want them to hear from the school-based teams first. So we're providing a lot of trainings and in-services for our gen ed teachers to be able to share information with our families.
Right. Right. Thank you.
And can I say, I'm sorry?
It's okay, Mr. Homer.
Sorry, thank you. I was just going to ask, how are we doing with translation services for families and interpretation services? Are you finding, are there any languages that are not being served as well, or that you need more support in terms of providing language support, translation support?
So I utilize Baystate Translation, and they, we have a variety of translators. Through the IEP process, through EZIPE, we have documents automatically translated into multiple languages. And the ones that they are not able to translate, I use Baystate. And I have a really good turnaround with, you know, with translation packets. And we always have interpreters at the team meetings. We utilize that service. And they've been great. They've been, I've been using them probably, probably eight, seven or eight years.
Okay. Yeah, I'm familiar, we use Baystate in the school district that I work in. We, we've sometimes had them participate by phone, too. Do you have, they phone in remotely and participate?
Remote and in-person. So during the, obviously during the times where we did all our meetings virtually, they were meeting virtually.
Are parents able to participate remotely?
Yes. So right now, we have, we are giving parents options of in-person or virtual, depending. So during the time when school was mostly virtual, parents participated, they will be at work and say, hey, I can, I'm taking my lunch. I'm going to do this virtually. Is that okay? Absolutely. We always allow, we give parents an option of coming in person. And I just actually had a principal call me early and say, this parent wants their team meeting virtual tomorrow. I said, no problem. I think that gives parents opportunities to not have to take the day off from work, and it gives them a chance, because many people are very accommodating, and allowing them to do it during their lunch break or from their cars. Because a lot of our families are doing it from their cars. The one thing I do want to add, we have a different special education structure where department heads are housed in buildings and have, are responsible for, you know, three or four schools. And having the department heads housed in those buildings and only working with certain amount, certain schools, it's allowed for more communication with the staff about what the special education process is, and then the parents also. It's kind of streamlined the process a little bit.
I just want to acknowledge Mrs. Aylers. We're stuck in traffic, so she is joining us for the record. So she is attending the meeting. Welcome, Kathy.
Thank you.
So awesome. I guess you can continue with your presentation. I apologize for interrupting, but I just didn't want to forget.
Oh, no, I like questions. I like a lot of questions.
I know this is a very, very important, and I know this is one of the questions I usually get from a lot of our constituents, as far as the IEP process. And, you know, a lot of parents are afraid that they don't want their child to fall behind if there is, if there is something that their child needs to go as far as extra assistance when it comes to, you know, the special ed department. So I know a lot of us, this is a, this is probably one of the questions I get all the time, is the IEP.
Yeah. And I think that what a lot of people struggle with is we do follow the Massachusetts guidelines for eligibility. So we have the, you know, different disability categories. And when we know a child is struggling, but they're not eligible through the special education process, it's like, okay, so now what? So we're really looking at our schools and looking at what interventions we have in place, and what else do we need to do to provide additional interventions for students that do not qualify for special education? Or to, you know, to preempt it? So we, what can we do to help them and figure out what their struggles are before we get to special education? You know, we don't want any children to have to go through evaluations, unnecessary evaluations. So we want to make sure we put everything in place. And that's constantly a work in progress. That is a work in progress.
Definitely. Now, do the schools report the amount of IEP requests that they get, as far as like families? So do you get like a report? So you just don't want a student to fall through the cracks? Like, you know, a parent puts in a request, and then, you know, time's gone by, and, you know, things haven't been, you know, I get it. We were playing catch-up with everything else due to COVID. So do the schools report to the special ed department directly as this is the amount of requests that we've gotten?
So we are on very strict timelines. So if a parent does put in a request, they typically do it through email. We'll take any text, email, letter. And we only, we have five days to respond to that. We have five days to get that evaluation consent to the parent. And typically, we like to talk to the parent first to say, you know, what are your concerns? But that doesn't always happen. So if we are not able to communicate with the parent within the first two days, we're generating the consent, and we're getting that out to the family. And through our EZIPE process, they're automatically emailed, and we also had copy mail. And then we do, we have, having the department heads housed in those buildings and that structure, we have a department head and a team chair. Team chairs have two schools that they're focusing on. There's a lot of communication if, when schools say, you know, we've put in some requests, where are we in that process? And so we do, and we keep the track of how many initial evaluations we have, and we're following that process.
Thank you.
It's also important to note that once a parent requests or a school requests that a child be evaluated, you, by law, you have to treat that child as a special education student. Anything you do with discipline, any supports, interventions, even though they might not have an official IEP signed because they're going through the evaluation process, once the parent signs the consent, that student is deemed to be special education, and you need to follow all the special education laws with discipline, reporting their attendance. So, you know, principals and assistant principals and leaders of buildings, you know, know that. And whether it's either the parent that's requesting an evaluation or the school, once that evaluation is requested, that child is deemed to be special education.
Thank you for clarifying and actually providing that extra info for us. Again, we have a lot of parents that are watching this evening, so, and a lot of them just don't know where to start sometimes. And just so they know that they have, this is in place. This is, this is what it's all about, as far as trying to get our students the help that they need.
And parents can call our office. I speak to parents pretty much all day long, and, you know, I enjoy that part of my job, communicating with families. But all the people that work in my office, they know the process. So if a parent calls and says, you know, my child's struggling, what do I need to do? They're able to explain the process, and then we can get the ball rolling for them. This is, this policy, this Procedures Manual is really important for even for, just for our district, even for leaders and our teachers and support staff to be able to walk through and say, this is what the process looks like. It really talks about from the beginning to the end. You know, the pre-referral, the referral, the consent, the evaluation, what do services look like? And this past, well, this school year, and we're still in this school year, and next year, we're really looking at how are we providing services that maximize for kids? We're looking at service delivery in a different lens. We want to make sure that we're capturing all the student, what the student needs within that gen ed setting. Because the law really is very strict about least restrictive environment, making sure the students are educated in their gen ed classroom. So our responsibility is to make sure we're providing them enough supports to be able to access the curriculum, make progress, make effective progress, and that's the most important thing. So we're really looking at service delivery, and we've been looking at it over the past couple of years.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Also, tell them about the CPAC meeting, because if parents are interested and they're wondering tonight, the CPAC has loads of information for this type of thing.
And we do monthly meetings. I typically, at the beginning.
The next meeting is?
Is in May. It's actually our transition meeting. So at the beginning of the school year, I do a presentation on regulations, state and federal laws. What does it look like? What does special education look like? Our process. And we, I did that in September or October. I think it was September. Our next meeting is in May, and it's on transition. So this is the time of year when kids are transitioning. We're transitioning from different levels, preschool to kindergarten, fifth grade to sixth grade, eighth grade to ninth grade. And parents get very nervous about what that transition looks like, and we try to set up transition meetings. And today, my department heads actually met and talked about transition plans, transition forms that they want to create. So when a student transitions from one level to another, that they have a packet or a piece of paper that kind of highlights the different, the different areas that they're strong, they have strengths, and what they need to work on. And then in June, Terry McIntosh and I have not really set a date for June because we're trying, we want to wait and see what the next topic is that we want to do. So.
Right. So the meetings, you can go on Facebook and like the CPAC page.
Yes. And we have it posted on our.
And then Terry posts when the meetings are?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
So for those that are watching this evening, I actually, I was looking for the CPAC page because I know I have you on my Facebook to give that address to those that are watching. If you know it offhand, and Mrs. McIntosh is absolutely wonderful.
She is wonderful.
She's such a sweet person, and we're lucky to have her as well helping out. I know I've, anytime a parent has any questions, we're like, you got to reach out to Mrs. McIntosh. So do you have that page? Do you know the exact, is it the Brockton?
It's Brockton CPAC page. So it's, you know, it's the Brockton S-E-P-A-C.
AC. It will come up.
Yeah. S-E-P-A-C. And I just want people to know that, you know, I have an open door policy, and people can call me, email me, and, you know, meet with me. That's, I like that part of my job.
Thank you. And a lot of the families do need that extra little handholding right now, especially when they're going through that process. Any of the members have any questions or comments?
I just want to say one other thing. I think that when parents attend team meetings, it's pretty overwhelming, and, you know, you have a lot of people talking at you. So one of the things we've been really working on is talking to parents and not reading a report. Parents don't need to, you know, have all these numbers thrown at them. It's more about, this is your child's strengths, these are the areas we need to improve, and this is how we're going to get there. So that's really trying to change the script. Because it is overwhelming for parents to sit and have, you know, eight or 10 people sitting around a table talking about their child, who they're already concerned about. So it's really about changing the script, making it more parent-friendly, having parents ask more questions. And the parent checklist, I think, helps with that. So.
Thank you. So is that your presentation for this evening?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So I have a quick question. So I believe this has to go before the Policy Manual Subcommittee, before we can vote on it? Because it is being added to, even though it's an update? I could be wrong, but I just want to clarify. Is this brand new or is it updated?
This is an update from a, from a long.
So where it's an update, I believe they have to compare the changes.
But MASC has already updated the manual, right? So all the updates would be in the manual already. And when we go over the special ed section, then we will review that. Yeah?
This is much more detailed. This, this really goes into a lot more detail.
Yeah, that's fine.
With appendices and.
Sharon? Actually, can you come to one of the mics? Just so, yeah. Just for those that are listening. It's just where there's been changes to an existing policy, we have to show the changes, and they need to be approved by the Policy Subcommittee, the Policy Manual Subcommittee. But I, we can get clarification on that.
So we are mandated to have this on file and have it available to people and publicly available. And when you look back at what we have, we had our attorney go through this thoroughly and make sure that we have all aspects of what Brockton Public Schools does in terms of special education available. We haven't had one of these put together in many years, and I'm going to urge you to not wait for other policies, but to move forward on this if you can. Because we have just completed our tier of focus monitoring review with the Department of Education for Special Education. And we want to make sure that everything that we have related to special education is updated and available to our families and communities. So I, your part, your part is your part, but I just want to make sure that it's really clear that to look for old policies and try to connect it to what we have now and do that going across and figuring out what, what changes have been, have taken place. We've had our attorney go completely through this, so.
I apologize for interrupting. It's just, but where is? Without seeing what the changes were? Okay, but we, okay, if the committee's comfortable, I mean, where are the changes? Like, we're not actually seeing changes that were made from the previous policy, and this is the current policy. Where's like the red line? Where's that copy to see what was added, what was taken out? As we normally do with a Policy Manual Subcommittee, we see that this is the policy, and then these are the changes, and then they vote on it for us as a committee, which is one of, I understand the time-sensitive part of this, but we would have to, you know, I'd have to talk to the committee and see what they're comfortable. Whereas we're not seeing the previous policy. We're just seeing a policy before us, and we're not seeing the additions or, is it fine? The school committee? Okay. Then we can, we can probably, if we can get a copy of what the original policy looked like as far as the Special Ed Policies and Procedures Manual prior to the January 2022 changes, and then we can have that provided to our committee members, and then we can vote on that. If we can add it to the May 3rd, which is next week. Does that allow you enough time for us to be able to review it? You'd have to get it to Mrs. Campbell so we can get it into our packets this weekend.
And I will say to you, because so much more work has gone into this one, what we have now is significantly more than what we had before. So it won't line up, there's this page and this page, and here's what's different. There will be things in this manual that didn't exist before, so you need to be clear on that.
Definitely, definitely. I mean, we, we understand that things have changed. Just curious, when was the last policy? What was the date on that?
I want to say like.
In the 90s?
90s, maybe 2001, maybe 1999? Maybe 2000.
99 or 2003.
Yeah.
So it has been sometimes. So we do understand, you know, things have changed.
Probably triple the size.
Okay.
And even with the procedural safeguards, those have changed through the Department of Ed. So they used to be parents' rights, which were very different than the procedural safeguards that they have now. So, yeah, I can, I have no.
We can send the old one.
Absolutely. I mean, if any of the committee members have any questions or comments, I'm just trying to make sure that you have a clear packet to review on something that we're going to be voting. And there is a time-sensitive when it comes to this. So it doesn't look like anyone's got any questions. I mean, if you want to vote on it now, it's up to you. For those that would prefer to see the previous policy, we can leave it up to the committee.
I make a motion to accept the Brockton Public Schools Special Education Policies and Procedures Manual.
Well, do any members have any questions before we put a motion on the table? Okay. Anyone want to second that, then? So a motion's been made and properly seconded. A motion's been made by Mrs. Sullivan and properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. We're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Aylers?
Yes.
Mr. Homer?
No.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I, I really would prefer to see the previous policy. I think one week, would that really be much of a delay?
I think you can, you can amend the motion to say, recommended, once we, you know, I don't know, we have to figure out how to word it, but once you see the form of policy, you recommend it. It still has to be approved by the full school. Like, this group is not, you're not the final vote. The school, the full school committee is the final. So you can amend the motion to say.
You can amend it next week. Okay.
No, you can amend it now and say, we've, you know, you know, we recommend to the full school committee, once we are able to review the.
So have Mrs. Sullivan, have Mrs. Sullivan amend her motion?
Yeah.
To recommend this for final review before the school committee, and then we can take a vote next week?
Yeah. But you can say that you might want to put in the motion that would the review of the old committee, of the old policy.
Okay. I'll add to the motion that we review the old policy of the Brockton Public Schools Special Ed Policies and Procedures Manual.
Okay. Second.
And I'll, okay. So it was, so it was amended by Mrs. Sullivan, and it was seconded by Mr. Homer. All in favor, will just show a raise of hands? And that's unanimous? Okay. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
We appreciate your time. Wonderful. You know, a lot of work did go into this. We just want to make sure that, you know, everything's good to go, and it's next week. So we'll, we'll get this.
And we'll also, in the, in the packet, we'll also include Attorney Paige Tobin's contact information. If you have any questions at all, she's the attorney we've used for years. She's excellent around special education law. So we'll include her contact information. You'll have her email and her phone, if you have any questions at all, before Tuesday's meeting. We'll try to get you the information before. I can, we'll get you her, Melinda will send the contact information by email to everybody tomorrow. That way, if you have any questions, you can call her well before a week from now, next Tuesday.